We're still recording.
All right, we ready to go, side casting and all that? All right, we'll go ahead and call the committee of the whole work session to order. All council members are present, lots of staff is present, mayor's here too. And a couple of public members, so that's good. And I left my agenda in there with people named on it. So who's leading off with our first discussion?
I'll start with both of these.
Multi-family housing live-work project at 3,009 west 7,800 south.
Yes, so this, this project is coming to you at this time. It's already gone through the pre-app with staff.
Because I like.
An attachment A in your packet, kind of gives a report from the different department heads of what the issues are that need to be addressed. You change the code so that at a pre-app, the applicant comes to you, which is appropriate in this case because what is currently proposed, there isn't a tool in the code to permit. So Mr. Adam Nash is here representing the developer. This is the parcel of land behind, just east of Macy's, they call the Tomato Patch there, about 3,009 west 7,800 south. And so we've got a few slides, the concepts and the things that's submitted in the pre-app are, it different attachments in your packet. Should have been able to review. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Nash to talk about his project.
Thank you very much for this time tonight to represent our project. I like the format a lot. You know, in the other cities that do this. I have a lot of experience here in the city. Most of it's not too recent, but probably developed five or 600 different residential units, some multi-family. I don't want to tell you guys how old I am, but I remember meeting in the old building, how's that? So this property is owned by the Diamond family. And Diamond family, they're a long time residents. They own, they've owned a lot of single family, multi-family and commercial properties in West Jordan over the years. Tomato Patch is appropriate because that property obviously was never developed. It's great, great property. It's for a lot of things, I'm sure. They do own the property where Macy's is, and Macy's is one of their tenants. And they, it's only like a 30-year lease, so they're probably eight years left in the primary lease and no indications that they would do anything except for stay there and extend their lease. The Diamonds have explored several commercial uses for the property. Retail has not been very popular, particularly because once the landings opened up, it kind of sucked up all of the Class A primary type tenants and secondary tenants, so I would call them, would have interest in this, etc. It'd be too expensive for them, but you end up with the secondhand stores, vape shops, all kinds of uses that they don't make very good tenants for us. Now, they make great tenants for the city. But anyways, restaurants could talk to us, and that's only, you know, a little portion out front and that type of thing. Current zone, of course, is a C2, it's a community shopping center zone. So it's restricted to that. There are several uses in there that are a lot more intense than what we're proposing here. We're coming in at a density of 14.5 units an acre. I've been looking through the code to figure out what that is, and one of the things I found was the intensity of residential development, where residential structures can be attached, detached, single family, two-family, multi-family in nature, so that didn't really nail it down for me. But I'm within that, and I think you guys have zones up to 45 or 75 units an acre, would that just be like high-rise type things, but a lot more intensive, more discussing. One thing I wanted to discuss real quickly is, I do understand one of the reasons that cities don't like to give up their commercial zone property, and it's the perceived loss of taxes. And I say that because in this instance, we have very good comparables that we can lay out. We use Macy's next door as our example of an existing tax base. Macy's 2024, the whole property, not just Macy's, the whole property has a taxable value of $9,208,500. The proposed Diamond Park that I'm working on here with you guys, it has a proposed tax value of $42,800,000. That's 33,591,500 higher taxable value than the commercial property right next door. So we're not stepping down in tax value, we're stepping up maybe three or four times as much value. So maybe the perceived value or loss of taxes can be looked at a lot closer. I don't know what you get out of residential versus commercial. That'd have to explore further, of course. Also, this project with the enjoy, maintain community, which should have a lot less costing expense to the city as far as services. It's a private road subdivision, and so those are upkeep items the city wouldn't be responsible for. That's pretty much my layout. It's a pretty straightforward, we need a change by city council to create a zone or amend the zone that we can develop this type of project in. Real quickly, the we've done this elsewhere in South Salt Lake, where the properties up front on 7, 800 and the one immediately on the next row, they're work, they're work units, where the bottom floor is retail and the balance of the building, second, third floor is townhome. Very popular, first pieces that sold out in our project on State Street. Because we want to maintain that retail, commercial front there. I own property, more property going down to Hell Ranch in that same type of zone. And we've been working around trying to figure out what tenants can kind of go in there. But we think retail still along that busy street is one of the best options. And so I'm happy to do that, explore, change that, nothing sacred here to the site planner should propose, Jesus. I'm open for any questions.
You should get a $5 pizza.
Sure, sure.
Scott, I've got a question for you first.
Just ask your distress or something.
Isn't the policy of the city to not use private roads?
I don't know if there's a specific policy. When private roads are developed, we require them to be built to city standards, because history has shown that they'll likely be incorporated sometime into the public realm.
So is a 26-foot road a city standard build?
Well, are you talking just asphalt?
Yeah.
The curb, curb to curb, yeah, the travel lane seems to, I don't know what the outside treatment from the curb out would be.
Standard lane is 12 feet wide, right?
Yeah, the city, that's why I was asking what the city standard is for city, for city width, because 26 doesn't sit as the normal number for me, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, so we'd have to look at it. In fact, in your packet, I could pull it up, I think the engineers may have commented on that. Ray, you might be more familiar, Ray's back here, he's been the planner assigned to this.
So pretty much, here's what I want to share. I don't feel like it was that long ago that we had residents work on our general plan. And I understand that it changes, but to me, it should be changing over time. And it seems like they worked really hard on it, development services worked really hard on it. We took all this public input and now we just keep changing. So in my mind, it's like, I don't know why we have that plan if, if we don't ever intend to follow it.
What are the general plans?
Yes, C2. And the other issue I have is there was an area that I asked, not some of you, but others of you, that we changed from commercial to residential in our general plan, and you were adamant that we not do that. And I was asking on behalf of a community that would make much safer exit potentially in the future should Napa Auto leave. And overwhelmingly, this body did not want to do that. So those are my general comments. For this specifically.
You're talking Napa right next door to this?
No, she's talking about, she's talking about Nap on 90th and 40th.
Yeah.
Northeast corner.
Because we said we needed to keep our commercial, so seems a little odd that we then want to get rid of this commercial. I personally love the live-work along 78. I think I could probably do that, but if for some reason we decide as a body that we're going to change this from commercial, I will not go for this density. I think that's way too much in that area. We don't have the infrastructure for it in that area, probably because from what I read from staff. And quite frankly, what I hear our governor saying and what I hear our public saying, what they want is small, single-family homes on lots that they can be affordable. They don't want attached dwelling units in town. So what I'm personally looking for for the city is what I hear the governor saying and what I hear people saying, that they would like a small home. So ironically, I might entertain cottage lots there, it would mean you wouldn't have the density. But if the Diamonds own this, they've owned it for decades, so even putting some in there, they'll, they'll still gain a lot. And, and I want what's best for the city, and the plan that's been presented to me is not what's best. So, and I agree, I think this is a really good process, because what I don't like is when a developer has spent a lot of money, goes through the planning commission, then it comes to the city council and we're like, uh-uh, we're not doing that. Because I think everybody loses then, and my idea for these meetings is that we can perhaps come to a win-win.
We did develop the other side of the canal in that.
Homes with the top lot?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
I don't know what it's called, but I know exactly where we mean.
River Coward.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we did develop that, some kind of like an 8.5 or something like that. And then we did maintain the front parcels as commercial.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we're opposed to doing that, obviously, we're looking to maximize our opportunity. That that becomes, you know, a trade-off, that we could do that, you know, I'd look at it for sure.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna jump into here, one, the ERU count for 64 units is going to be way too high for the utilities and that are the existing utilities. I don't think we could, I don't think we could. Ray, does the engineering report have anything to say about the ERU count?
They just talked about providing a report so they could make that calculation, they did mention that.
That's only the engineering report.
Yeah, because to go from, because a commercial, commercial development on four acres of land is probably three or four ERUs going to 60-something ERUs, nah. The, the, the impact on the utilities, particularly where you're on the, on the downstream end of 7,800 south, because there's a whole lot more stuff going on. And, and when we were talking about Bowman Zero and the development, we were talking about having to redo the line from 64th West to Airport Road. And, you know, and there's probably still some work that has to be done there. And, and it was going to cause some downstream issues with that, I don't, anyway. So we'll leave the ERU to that. I will tell you that at 64 units to the acre, or 14 units to the acre here, I'm a no. I can tell you that as recently as today, there were some things on Facebook where West Jordan residents are complaining about the high density and 14 units an acre is a high-density project. We haven't, we haven't, the last, the last couple of higher-density projects we approved, Station at Gardner Mill, 27 units to the acre, we fought that and we ended up stuck with it because of some.
Get it down though.
And now they're here because of it.
And, and man, we're here because of that. The other one was Jordan Fields at TOD, we haven't done that high-density and I don't plan on voting for it. Here's a couple of my thoughts. I like the idea of the live-work. So I have a couple of suggestions, these are my suggestions. Then we'll let other council members give their suggestions. There are two possible ways of doing this, to make this work, but it needs to be at about five units an acre, 5.5 units an acre. And that is, one, we can modify the SC2 zone to allow residential for, for live-work. And a five units an acre puts you about 20 live-work units, 22, and that works for me. And I would modify the SC2 zone to allow live-work units in an SC2 zone. Or two, we modify the integrated housing ordinance that, and we increase, we can increase the percentage, right now I think it's 10% of the increased of the integrated housing zone to be multi-family. We could manipulate the number, or increase the number and modify the integrated housing zone to allow 30, 40%, 50% based on a finding of the council, that because this was commercial and we're remaining the, the live-work. But that would still follow the integrated housing ordinance that maximum caps out at 5.5, or it could cap out at 5.75 units per acre if the 0.25 units per acre, the land underneath is donated to a community housing trust. So I'm, I'm okay with either modifying the SC2 to allow the live-work at five some, I'd go, I'd go 5.5 units an acre, that's the typical PRD. Or I will, I would look at modifying the integrated housing ordinance that 5.5 units an acre and look at the mix of multi-family versus single-family in that area. But those are the only two I would look at, but I won't go 64.
Yes, I'll jump in. I really, well, the council members have already spoken, I really do like the live-work concept. I think it's creative, it's a nice approach. To me, it takes me back to, it's time I spent living in Germany where, you know, the baker lives above his shop and goes down fires up the oven at 2:00 AM and has a, has a bread ready to go at 6:00 and just lives and works together. It's a, I think it's a fabulous concept. One that we ought to maybe go back to, we kind of lost to nurse's sake. Right? You were one that we actually have experience with now, so we're comfortable in building that and having that, you know, as something we can sell. Yeah, I think it's, it's a fabulous idea. Along with Councilmember Green, I do believe that the density is far too high for this location, and so as it stands, I would not go for it, you know. I really love the creativity in the ideas that are going into it.
I get the feeling that just based off the comments in the water and sewer, that once a licensed engineer goes through and says, this is how much we can actually have on here, I think it's going to change a lot for you guys. But I am in agreeance that live-work thing, I would buy a place like that in a heartbeat. So I look forward to seeing some of that in our city as we move forward.
Could I jump in real quick? Because there was one thing with the live-work. The way it was presented in the one photograph you had, looked like it was right out to the street. And I'm worried about parking for those street frontage units, that they would be actually parking right on 7,800 west, or sorry, 7,800 south.
It's, they will.
Yeah, so I would like to see some parking for those units, where they could be off the street. That's what South Salt Lake wanted was that, because State Street, they have people park down continually. And our only discussion about actually that is, I don't think you can really park on 7,800 just practically, but we can, we could maybe do a couple of the Mary Poppins parking stalls. And then, you know, because you only end up with six or eight of them, people could pop into and pop out, but yes.
So my thing what happens there is, when I say they will park there, it won't be customers, it will be the apartment residents, because if you go to South Jordan at the district, they have all these apartments next to the district, and if you drive down this one street, both sides are just covered with cars from the apartments. And so.
Townhouses.
Chad, drive, drive through the station at Gardner Mill. This is a perfect example, so. Station at Gardner Mill, you got their main street. There's, there was no parking, every, every tenant's got a parking spot out on the side, but guess where they all park? Right along the main street and Station at Gardner Mill, because it's closer to the doors. You go out to that apartment complex out by Cisco and Echo Ridge, and they're all parking on the street because it's closer to their front door. So he's, he's absolutely right, if, if, if you do it that way, all those people that have the live-work on the, on the far north end, they're going to park on 70, they're going to park on 78 here.
Make that a two-hour parking.
Unless they have a garage behind them that.
They do have parking.
Their garage will be full of stuff other than a car.
That's a good story from their story.
I'm saying if you made that a two-hour parking, that's a garage parking.
Now we're getting in the weeds.
If they're parked in the street. So getting back to what I was trying to say, so you're going to have the parking issue on 78, which I don't want to see. You've got a previous picture?
The elevation?
No, the picture of the thing on the road. Not that one, the, the pretty picture with the cars and everything. When I saw the car, I'm like, are those cars moving or they parked there? It's, yeah, it looks like so.
That's State Street, right?
So, that's 78. I'd say that's what 78, that's what 78 would look like.
Illustration, yes.
Yeah, those are.
And then, so go back to the map, so the other thing I don't like as well is the back entrance that goes onto the Macy's. Not driveway, what's it called, loading dock?
Yeah.
So that's kind of not the best way to have an entrance and exit for, especially one this big.
It's kind of a fire.
Oh, I understand, totally understand it's a fire thing, but.
It's actually going to be the way that they go out, if they don't want to turn right on 78, they're going to go out that way.
So they can go out and come out to the light.
Come out to the light, that's what I would do.
Yeah.
I actually like the plan for the most part, I think the density is fair, I think.
What are those white ones, are those parking stalls?
Yeah, I think.
So those are small houses?
I think townhouses, in my mind, townhouses fall under kind of a medium to high-density, not, not, they usually come in in our code under high-density, under the definitions in code, but I've long been saying that I think our code definitions are not what people think of. I had somebody tell me that they were upset about the high-rise three-story townhomes in West Jordan. And I thought, okay, well, now if that's high-density to you, then we're not speaking the same language and, you know. Because three stories to me is not a high-rise. Especially, I would love to see a high-rise, maybe not on this property. So for me, the density doesn't bother me too much, as long as the engineering improves it and thinks it, or something can make it work. I'm okay with it. I have a little bit of concern with the logistics of the live-work having two rows of that. I think there's a little bit of a logistics issue when you got people living and shopping in the same area. But that's, you know, I'm not, that's for the people who live there to deal with, or for you guys to work out and get it right, so that you can sell them.
When you say two rows, what are you saying, two rows?
There's pink, two rows of pink, there's one on 78 and there's one behind it, right?
That's another live-work on their own?
Yeah, pink is all live-work, so I think it's kind of, I love the live-work concept, I love walkable communities, the whole theory behind it. I was just thinking today that, gosh, I could sell, I have two cars, right? We have two cars in our garage, we have car payments on both, we have insurance payments on both, I was thinking, gosh, if we live somewhere where I could just walk to the grocery store and get most of what I needed when I walk, I could just Uber everywhere else and I'd be fine, I still come out ahead, right? And, but I live also far away from anything, so.
You could walk to Macy's.
I, I could walk to Macy's, it would take me all day, and I could walk back. Walk to city council.
Sure.
So I love the idea of it, I love the, I love the theory, I love the idea, this density doesn't bother me at all. The logistics, the details, I could, I could get a little hung up on, but we're not at that stage when you're talking about it here, so.
Our experience doesn't fit any ordinance that we have.
Well, again, yeah, how do, how do we get from A to B, doesn't matter if B is not where you want to get to, right? So for me, B is an okay place and I'm willing to figure out the how. But for most of you, it sounds like B is not an okay place, so don't worry about how you get there, because you don't want to get there.
Not at the density, not at that density, no.
Our, our experience with the, the live-work's encouraged us to do this with the double-facing stuff, because the interior ones, they're, you end up with like the insurance guy and accountant and these people that they don't need the high-end retail, but they want to do the live-work stuff. And so, you know, that, that only has like 11 units or something. So it's not overwhelming, and we think there's certainly that kind of demand to do that. But you'll get like people that need much more visibility on the front, and then people that don't need quite as much on the back. Yeah, my accountant has kind of a hidden office that I have to drive back into, and it's in a business condo area, but I could, I could see that working for an accountant. That's a real bracket, destination retail, I think.
Ask you a follow-up question on the live-work. So I've seen, Adam, I've seen live-work units done differently. Could you explain what you mean by live-works? Or somebody mentioned the district, on the north side of the district, there are, I don't know if they're condos or apartments, but they have, their live-work is, it's flex space. Meaning, a lot of those are just an extension of the residence, and they're not used as, as commercial frontage. Would these along 78, would they, would these be flex space? Could this person just have a den, a study down here?
No.
Okay, that, for me, that, that makes a big difference, and I just wanted to make sure that we were talking to the same language.
We'll do CCNR against that. If we work out with you guys, you'll zone against that, that's not our intent at all.
Similarly, can I ask a similar question? Some live-work units is just living above commercial space, other live-work units, it is an integrated space where the owner of the residence is the owner of the commercial space as well. I'm not clear, I thought you said this was residences above retail. Are you proposing residents above retail or integrated live-work?
Those both are available. One thing that we found out was that when the guy wants to, like, his spa business, one, one little shop didn't cut it for him, they would only have a gate enter explore fee or something. So then we looked further out, well, you know, if you, they need like 3,200 feet or something like that. So in that instance, then we looked at how we could make both, both doors that come in from the back, they're side by side, one goes into the retail and one is a staircase. So it offers some flexibility there, but we want the retail to be the main floor.
That's our, that's our.
This is more of a retail with vertical apartments, condo above the top.
Right.
You know, like the Colosseum.
Except like the Colosseum.
Except on the ground floor of that, it's just an extended stay.
They haven't, no, they haven't, they haven't done that.
They haven't done that yet.
I didn't hear, I felt like it's really asked a couple of questions, and one was, is your intent to have the same person that's running the business on the main floor be the tenant above?
That's what I'm saying, Mary Gold. So there's some feedback anyway.
I'd love you to come back with what you think to, to this kind of meeting again.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's time, I'll definitely take the opportunity to come up with something different.
Excited, obviously, for those work-life thing, clearly.
Excited, obviously, for those work life thing, clearly.
I don't think Bob or Chad, no Chad did. Bob?
No, I, I'm, I'm aware that I, it's so weird that uh I, I, I read through everything and looked at the map real quick and in my. Just looking at it quickly, I thought that that bottom level, I didn't even look at where seventy eight south was, I thought the. The bottom yellow was the work live, that's why I didn't notice it was the two thing. So that's totally just me. I read everything and then went, oh, okay now, and that's those yellows, so. Um, the two, the two things does seem a, a little weird to me because the. Then it turns into a weird shopping district into where all of the housing is, so. That's a lot for me, but.
You have shopping on the back end one too?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, go back, cause now, now.
The ground floor of both of them is retail.
So then there would be almost, you'd come around into this thing for a second.
Parking stalls on the other side for the other.
The, 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 the private road would be the access to the garages. Almost like an alley.
Yeah, and for whatever reason, I thought that was the more, I had thought those ones on the side, but that's just. Me, like I said, I read everything and then I looked at the map hopefully. But um, that's why I was a little off there, so I apologize about that. I. As a Bob's Burgers fan, I love the uh, you know, retail down below and, and up above, so. That's just always, as long as you have one of those, I'll, I'll be okay with it. I don't think a lot of it, when I was reading through, a lot of it just came down to me is, we don't know. What the density is gonna be allowed because of what, what it's gonna have, and until we have that. Um, where uh, what Chair Jacob was saying is, kind of the, the two, we. Getting from A to B might not work if, if B's not, not an option, so I wanna see what that is. I would love to see it down closer in the, you know, eight, nine range, just uh. Just to keep that in there, but I, it would really come down to what it's gonna be allowed to. So I was, I didn't see a lot, just cause I was echoing a lot of what the others were saying in there.
Since, since you mentioned that basically the diamonds are the leaseholder for Macy's, one of the concerns as. Councilmember Lamb brought up is that. You're kind of sharing Macy's delivery driveway. Um, and I don't really know how leases work, so. I mean, you're the property owner, so that's a concern in the staff report, but if they're the property owner, can they just? Overrule Macy's and Napa?
Well, they won't be the property owner, that's probably.
They're not, but we'll create a reorient. Cause it'll, it'll be owner occupied, so it'll be.
Right.
Or your kids and people that own it.
Are, are you planning on selling these to individual homeowners? Or are you planning to sell this to a corporation to rent out?
I've never done that, no.
We don't want you to.
This is uh designed and planned to be single-family. Lives is that are connected, so. You know, that's just like your comments about the attorneys, you know, that, that's my eye wash, but. They're townhouses and they are owner occupied, it'll be plotted uh accordingly. And we've had good success with this. These townhomes. Six hundred thousand range, they're not gonna be inexpensive and the landscaping will be. Really big and the fencing and the.
I like your other development better. Where there's single-family homes with small plots and, yeah.
You know, and, and we did that. At a really timely spot, you know, right before that whole epidemic deal, so. We thought it wasn't working out well, but it's just cause people couldn't move. So, once that pandemic was over, you know, turned out to be just fine.
Ray has a question. On the south side of the property, you've got a single family. What are the heights?
We would set that down to two-story and so. Now typically, two-story is gonna be like, what, twenty-eight feet or something like that? And also there, um, we're proposing that. They have their own two-car driveway in front of them and their two-car. Garage in front of them, so there's nothing in the back except for landscape.
The, the other thing is, is Ray mentions this and I'm looking at this. If that were an S C two zone and a, a commercial was gonna be built there. There would be a substantial buffer between the houses and these houses. The way this is gonna be built, those townhomes are gonna be right up on the back fence of the. You, you're, you're gonna have.
Looking into the neighbors one.
You're, you're gonna have five, you're, you're gonna have less than a. I vent, I ventured to guess that you're probably talking about a. Five or six or eight foot setback there, and if that were S C two. You're, you're at least twenty. Am I right with the zoning code? And, and so.
Yeah, I think it's showing on what Macy's is there now. You know, that that's how far away it would have to be, so you, give you an idea.
So, so those, so those southern homes being right up on the fence, that's, that, that's part of the reason why I'm saying. I don't like the density, cause you don't have the buffer. That if that were an S C two zone, that neighbor would get the buffer. I mean, I've got S C two in my backyard. And I've got, luckily, the way they build it, they, they build a. They build an eight-foot fence and because the change in elevation, it was a nine-and-a-half-foot fence. And so I have some gray shade in the backyard most of the day, uh, and uh. And, you know, but I, I also know that on the other side of that fence, I got trees. I, and I know that there's five or six, that, you know, there's a, there's a buffer with trees and the fence and everything. These neighbors don't have that and. I'm just afraid you're, you're, you're looking for. Trouble if you say I'm gonna put. That, that looks like twelve, eighteen units right along that back fence, right up against. The fence line of the people to the, you know, the east side of it, it's a canal. And we, you, you know, you can do what you want with the canal. Uh, the, the west side, Macy's, I got it. But that south side you got, I think you also have to be more sensitive to the buffer of the south side. With those units, because there is no buffer. That if they were expecting S C two to go in there, they wouldn't get that buffer.
Which if they've looked at our general plan, they are expecting.
Well, they would get thirty-five foot-high cinder block back wall, however.
Yeah, but that's not someone peering in my yard, that's a wall.
The street.
Anyway, that's, that's, that's my, that's my other comment, so.
I just have to agree and echo what Councilmember Green has said and. Uh, I'm not personally interested in, in uh changing out of the S C two. That one is currently, it is, I don't feel like we should be changing that uh to any ti- other type of zone. Maybe allowing some residential within the S C two is a, is an approach that I think could potentially work. With a plan of this nature. But there needs to be adjustments to it.
Absolutely. This, you know, tough concept. You know, I, I think. Although, you know, you guys are all here and you have a lot of experience, but my experience is. You guys put a height limit on me of like twenty feet and the neighbor next door still got the thirty-five. He goes thirty-five with the barn or whatever and you, you kind of defeat the whole purpose. So, so just something to throw out there.
Yeah, I, I, I don't like that. I don't care what you build next to somebody else's backyard, anyone. I look into my neighbor's backyard from my second-story windows. People do that anyway. I don't, my, my, my neighbors don't have anything interesting to look at.
You are to your neighbors, Zach.
I'm about four feet away from.
So if you can, if we can kind of find a consensus for the applicant, for staff, because what I, what I've heard, and I don't know that I, I've heard consensus is. The location of the fence, the density was number one. Um, maybe utility from engineering, but is there an acceptable density? It's, if, if you leave it S C two, that's gonna be a. Code amendment. Right, to, to, to allow housing in S C two. So amend that, there's also, it's balanced housing would need to be amended, so there's some work.
Not balanced.
Integrated, sorry, thank you. And so just a, a consensus of what you would like staff and the applicant to work on.
I want that restaurant you referred to. And if it were a steakhouse.
So I've heard, I've heard five, five units, I've heard the densities.
I'm gonna throw out a density, I'm gonna wing some kind of plan.
Yeah, I don't wanna throw out a density, I wanna see what the engineers say.
But um, but I think, I think what you've heard is live work is, is a nice idea, we kind of like the residential retail. Um, other than that, your density's a little high. That's what I'm, not my opinion, that's what I'm hearing from the, from the group. Um, if you tried, tried a detached or some of it detached and kind of see if maybe a detach made a nice little buffer on maybe that last row or something. I, I don't know. Um, that's why I'm saying you, you've been in this conversation too, so. It's up to you now to take this feedback and, and come back with another plan.
And, and Alan, I, I, I agree with Zach here, it's up to the developer to, to take our feedback. It, it's up to the developer to say, okay, he heard all of us. Hurt us. So Zach's right, he needs to take what he heard from us. Work with Scott, staff and Ray. And if they can come up with a, with what they heard. A reasonable density and a way to amend the code. That gives us the starting point for further discussions. But I don't think, I think Zach is right in the fact that. It's, we don't need to summarize anything more or give anybody else guidance. It's, we've, we've hit the ball back across the net playing. Either tennis or pickleball or badminton, whichever one you want. We've hit that. Uh, we've hit that across the, we've hit across the net. It's now in Mr. Nash's court. Let him decide based on what he's heard to come back, to, to get with staff.
Back with a new concept.
Get with staff, develop the concept, staff have heard what we've said. And, and then look at alternatives and see what may work, given the feedback that we have. Is that a, is that a summary that?
Yeah, and if Mr. Nash has any specific questions for us, well, I'm sure we'd be willing to answer.
Yeah, and if you wanna get back with any one of us, we're all willing, we're, we're probably almost all willing to talk, so.
procedurally, though, I would, I would not like to amend the S C two zone to make this fit on this property, cause there's S C two zones all over the city. And so I don't, I don't wanna go down that route. Come back with a new concept, if it doesn't fit in any current zone, we'll figure it out, right? Or if we need to rezone this to make it work, we'll figure it out. I think a PC zone would probably work.
A PC was all over here. PC zone.
Oh, it's gotta be two hundred acres.
Yeah, but we did PC zones.
Four unit PC zone, no.
We, and that's, that's subject to council.
It is, but a four-point-four unit PC zone's not gonna be, not gonna work.
So what I'm saying is, if we have an existing zone that we can chew on something to do, let's do that. That, and if, and if we don't, we need to make a new zone, I'd rather do that or an overlay or something. But we can apply to just this property.
And I'm not, and I'm not willing to go down writing a new zone for one piece of property, for this small.
I'm not, I'm not for allowing residential in every S C two zone.
I approve of that.
But, but, but to create a zone. If, if we go down the road of creating a zone for a four-point-four unit, uh, four-point-four. Infill property, then that's all we're gonna be doing the rest of our lives is creating a. We're, we're gonna be creating a spot zone for every. Uh, person that comes in and says, I got a development for this infill and it doesn't work in the city, so write me a zone that does.
We do have an infill housing ordinance, right?
Well, yeah, Councilman Green mentioned that as one of the options, right? The, the infill.
Well, integrated, I didn't mention, I talked about integrated and I'm willing to modify that. The infill, I don't think this works with the infill because the property doesn't meet the requirements, so.
I thought infill was for like empty properties that are just.
The infill has to be five acres.
So, gee, so we're gonna lose sleep over point six of an acre.
Because the details do matter.
Yeah, I would, yeah, anyway, all of that's subject to amendment and council, so you guys figure out the best way to move forward with this. I just don't think rezoning S C two for the entire city.
So I'll, I'll just summarize then, thank you. Um, work out something with staff that kind of meets what he's heard tonight. And then come back to a committee of the whole for further discussion.
Or feel free to contact each one of us individually or in small groups.
I don't do individual, just FYI.
I'm hesitant, but, so we have the residential overlay district. It, it's meant for, to redevelop or uh, to vitalize some of our older commercial areas. Um, would the council be willing to look at a uh. Residential overlay district, but, but watered down or, or. More than, like, for example, the existing R O D requires a structure parking, there's a lot of high expectations and there's.
It was written for Jordan Landy.
It was. We have a lot of other.
And never been used, by the way.
We have a other, we have a lot of other, to your point, because I'm a member of White Lock, a lot of S C two. Uh, scattered around the city that. Some eyes may be underperforming. Would the council be uh open to considering a new overlay to infuse some, some? In limited fashion, some of this live work stuff and some, some residential.
Sure, maybe that's, maybe that's a better way of saying what I was saying with create a new zone. Maybe create an overlay that works for places like this, cause this isn't the only. Four-ish acre spot where stuff like this would work, right? They're, they're all over the place.
The only problem that I have going down the road with something like that, Scott. Is that the R O, the R O D was written for an existing commercial. Complex.
Exactly.
It was written for something like.
Apartments on top of Macy's.
But.
But this is kind of the same concept. If Kmart property qualifies, kind of the same, you've got a big store next door and you got a little piece.
So this is undeveloped.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's my, that's my little bit of hesitancy here.
I know, that's why I'm a little reserved.
If you have, if you have an undeveloped piece of property that's zoned S C two. And it's in an S, then what Zach's talking about is everybody's gonna come and say, oh, let's turn all of this undeveloped S C two. Into high-density, high-density residential. And that's not what I'm hearing from the residents, that's not what we want.
Fair enough. I just wanted to throw that out there, I didn't wanna go down that road if, if it's not support.
Yeah, and I think the, I think the proper sequence of events here is come up with the point B that we wanna get to. And then we'll figure out route, the road to get from where we are and how it would work. If, if you come back with a plan that we all. Right, I mean, if you come back with a plan and we all go, wow, this is the best plan ever, why didn't you come with us the first, this, oh my gosh, build it now, right? And you say, well, we can't because zoning A, zoning B, zoning C, zoning D, we'll figure it out, right?
We can change zones.
Yeah, we can, we can. Whatever.
If, if it's something we like, we can change it, yeah.
I want to make sure we don't approach the general plan. And just. Well, and, and. At the, at the, at the flip of a coin, we change a zone just. Out of, out of what has been planned for years and years and decades.
Well, and you were right there, Kent, the general plan says this is, is designated commercial. And nothing that, and I will just tell you, the general plan under our, under our philosophies. And under the general plan and everything, the general plan is presumed correct and you have to prove to us why. Conditions have changed, that the general plan should be modified. And I've not heard anything other than the live work. That suggests that this ought to turn anything more than commercials, because that's. And, and, and I think that, that what Councilmember Shelton's saying is. Once we give up commercial. We're never gonna get it back. And. That's a concern, right? Is that once you give up commercial, you're never gonna get it back. And so. Yeah, you know, the general plan is presumed correct, so. You, you know, and I know market conditions change, but I think that's what Councilmember Whitelock started with was. The general plan says this is commercial, why do we want to change this away from commercial? I think you've heard that live work is an interesting concept and that we might be open to it, but. We've got to come up with the right balance for, if we're good. I, I will tell you. That if we are going to eliminate. I I will tell you that if we are going to eliminate commercial. It's got to benefit the city as much as it benefits the people who are building homes. And and it's and it's gonna have to. There's gonna have to show how that benefits the community. With 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 some with some reasonable, you know, some reasonable stuff that. How does this benefit the community other than the fact that we put sixty four units on a four piece, four point four unit piece of A Patriots? You know where I'm going?
Can I just um, chime in on this topic really quick? I don't want to belabor this point too much, but. As far as the general plan being presumed correct and also being presumed to have just been updated, a lot of it was not updated. A lot of future land use maps were, for lack of a better. How we assume to be correct. And weren't changed. We went through it and we we didn't look at every parcel of the city and the future land use map and go. Yeah, that one makes sense. Let's leave it like that. Or yeah, that one makes sense. Leave it like that. Or this one doesn't. Let's change it. We looked at a couple of dozen. Where we knew.
Citizen group looked at that map and they reviewed it.
And every citizen that lives in the vicinity of this property is going under the assumption that it will at some point.
Sure. I'm I'm so what I. Well, what I'm what I'm saying, though, is. Or the my my second part of this is that also comes with a load of history, right? Now, maybe this was put in commercial and what was next to it was also commercial when that was done, but that one had changed. Now, does that affect what's appropriate on this parcel? I think it does. If that was the history, right? I don't know what the history is here. But if if the if the neighborhood to the east. There's a compass room right there on it. I think it's not. The neighborhood to the east was is new and it was commercial. But a previous council in their infinite list decided, you know, residential makes sense because somebody came and asked and they said, yeah, good, do it. And they put in residential. Does that affect this property? Well, that wasn't considered, right? Because this was vacant land and it still is. You know what I mean? So so there's all there's layers and layers of history to to just say that. Oh, well, the general plan says this and it's always right. Well, maybe it is and maybe it isn't. Maybe things have happened. I mean, I've been doing this for a long time and I can still. Dozens of places where the general plan doesn't make sense. Or the future land use map. I don't want to say the general plan because general plan is more of a set of principles than it is a specific parcel by parcel thing. But. I I don't want to assume that something is correct because that's what's there now. When there might be something better that either the citizens group didn't consider. Maybe they weren't thinking about live work town home ideas. And if they had thought about that, that might have fit here. That's why we consider each application when it comes on its merits. And I think that's. Mayor Johnson, Mayor Melissa Johnson used to say all the time. And that dates me, by the way, by bringing it up. Um, is she used to say all the time, you get what you have or you get what's proposed. Right? He he if he was coming to us in there with a proposal saying approve this or don't approve this zone. It was we can either have an SC two zone or we can have whatever the zone is that's proposed. But we don't get to say, no, uh, R one eight. Right? We want R one eight. So we're going to vote for that. It doesn't work that way. We get what we have. We either say yes or no to what's proposed. And 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 that's how it works. And so property owners have rights. They can come and ask for a change and it's it's incumbent on us to have. The uh. I don't know, the generation. Yes, every everybody in the city has property rights, but my property rights end at my fence. Right? I don't have property rights for your property. I can't tell you what you can and can't do with limited exceptions and things. There's a whole lot of. Case law and crap about that, but um. You know, my property rights, the people that live there into the east, those four houses you can see on the bottom there. They have property rights right up to their fence and then they have a say, but they don't have a say. I appreciate the quiet. So anyway, so I'm open to suggestions. You know, you've heard the feedback. Come back with another plan and let's talk about that.
Sure.
Feel free to just grab it. You know, you don't have to go to a lot of expense. Feel free to grab a napkin and a pencil and. Bring that back and put it up on the screen.
I have one more thing. I'm happy to meet with the neighbors. Say, this is what we're talking about. This is what it currently is.
I'm I'm going to tell you that by the time you're done with this process, they're going to make you meet with the neighbors early on in the process. If they don't, if they don't, they've. Yeah, because that's that was one thing we learned early on with the couple of projects is you got to meet with the neighbors early.
I can say right now, the neighbors behind aren't going to be happy. The neighbors to the right probably won't care.
I I that's why I miss. If I were to assume stuff, the neighbors on the other side of the canal aren't going to worry much.
The neighbors behind you will.
Yep.
They they will say stuff.
The neighbors to the west won't care either.
Except if you take over their delivery area.
See, that's the thing. I think it's. Back facing it.
Yeah, but that was that affected them. This won't affect them. It's the same neighborhood. It's just their exit.
Yeah.
This doesn't affect their exits.
It's on the other side of the canal.
All right. Well, that horse, I think, has been thoroughly beat. We've made some glue. Uh, turned it into hamburgers for school kids and.
All right, we got pizza. We've got a steakhouse and what else?
It's not big enough for a Costco, so you know, sorry.
I didn't even mention trailer park.
Maybe Costco. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Happy to touch on another meeting.
Feel free to call or.
Yeah.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. You do look familiar. So I think you've been here before, but I mean, I think I've been here since you've been here. You've been here fourteen years. Started on the planning commission in twenty thirteen, so. Yeah, it's been a minute. Here since you were here. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you. Thanks, Ray.
Yeah, thanks, Ray. Scott.
Hi, Scott.
All right. Next up on the agenda is discussion of adjustments to council compensation. I'll just leave it at that.
You had this a couple council meetings ago to discuss and you asked it to come back to a committee of the whole further discussion. Uh, what I understood from the last meeting is kind of wanting to develop a policy. Councilmember Lamb has proposed a substitute one. So just in summary, the original proposal for a policy. Was um, to set the council compensation at twenty percent of the mayor's salary, which would be reviewed by the council every four years with existing code. But that would be effective um. Help to Councilmember Lamb, January.
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six. And it would provide for annual cost of living increases based on the Mountain West CPI index that is open to employees. Uh, based on the conversation of council at that meeting, uh, Councilmember Lamb drafted a su- a substitute. So there's. Two to discuss and kind of get your feel of where the next steps would go. This the substitute basically mirrors the mayor's. Policy, which is right now, in the fourth year of the mayor's term. Uh, the council meets and determines the mayor's salary for the next term effective January first, when the mayor takes his seat. And that salary stays set for those four years. There's no increases. The substitute mirrors that, except it's offset so that it's in the midterm of the mayor. So we're not doing all of it at the same time. So this would occur um, in the second year of the mayor's term. Or would occur the year the at large is up for reelection. So. Twenty twenty five and every four years thereafter. If you decide to do the substitute, uh, I'm sorry, and then there's no uh. Fully increases. It would be that salary for four years and then four years later. And you would meet and decide again. If there's no uh, consensus among the body every four years on that cycle, then the salary stays the same for the next four years. Obviously, you have a little um. Derogative uh, as as a council, you can bring it up anytime you want, but that would just basically set the policy. The substitute does not change the salary. The substitute is simply a policy. That says every four years, you need to discuss the council compensation if you want to do anything with it. And then it would be effective when the new after the new at large election that January. So those are the two. I didn't change anything from what the original proposal was um, a couple of meetings ago. And like I said, Councilmember Lamb asked if there could be a substitute. So he's provided the the substitute. Uh, for those two policies. I think setting a policy is what I gathered from the last meeting. But defining that is what we need guidance on.
I will share that that legislature and their. Their committee meeting on Monday and due to. Like to get on. They were discussing a way to finish compensation. I tried to find out what what it was about. I didn't know the people that were on that committee and when they looked at their minutes, they weren't up. Yeah, so I have to have this interesting.
elected officials and judicial compensation committee.
Oh, right. Okay.
Yeah, so it was interesting. So I think it's something that. Before we made any permanent thing, we should figure out if. We should make sure what they're doing.
And I will add that state law specifically says the legislative body, which is you, uh, sets those salaries.
I and I don't, I don't, I mean, other respect, I don't ever want to wait for the legislature to maybe do something before we decide or figure out what they might, you know. Considering doing because they haven't passed it. That's right. They just had a discussion.
That's not discussion.
So.
It might pertain.
So I think I think we act because even if they did draft a bill based on that and whatever, it may or may not pass. Let's let's. Let's get our guts in a row and if it gets over written, it gets over and. Deal with it. Change things all the time to support with the new state law. Do it all the time. So we have to change this. We do it. But let me put my two cents in since I wasn't here in the meeting that it was discussed in there, but I was on the meeting that was discussed in here. Uh, I'll throw my two cents in. It's a compensation. Sorry. Mayor laughed. Okay, he smiled. I mean, it was really funny. So my my thought, and I said this when when it was in here. Is the biggest thing for me, I don't really care where we land on a number. Couple of things that have occurred to me since that. What I said before was I think we need a cola. I think the cola needs to be in there to take the politics out of it. Because every time you bring it up, somebody's going to say, you guys don't deserve to get paid anything. There may not be true, but. We do get paid something, so there you go. I I like having the cola. Again, this the cola didn't even occur to me until I looked at Taylorsville. Taylorsville, every time we bring up a co- a comparable thing, they they go to the code, they pull out Taylorsville's Taylorsville salaries and they put them in this. Comparable table. Now here's Sandy, here's West Jordan, here's Taylorville, here's South Jordan, here's everybody's. And the Taylorsville number that they always put in is the number from two thousand eight. None of them make that now because in two thousand eight, except the number. They said, we're going to increase it by X number per year based on whatever. I think it's based on whatever the city gives the rest of the rest, the rest of the employees, which I think. Um, it could be three percent a year. It could be two and a half. I don't know if they have some other number, but I think setting it to the uh. Whatever we determine is fair for the rest of the employees should just apply. Then we don't have to have a politically fraught conversation every time somebody thinks that this needs to be brought up again. We can. And if somebody thinks that keeping up with three percent a year is not enough or is too much, we can have the conversation. It obviously plays well. You want to get reelected? But your pay, it worked for Kim Ralph. That's why he got elected. He went around. His whole campaign was, and there it goes, because he ran against him. His whole campaign was, I will not take this big salary for the mayor. Voted for him, save the city fifteen thousand dollars.
Although he never.
Talk about tipping over pennies to save dollars. Over dollars to save pennies. So for me, I think the cola is the biggest thing. Whether we tie it to a percentage of the mayor's salary or we just pick a number out of the air. Or we just start with the number that we have, that we have had, by the way, for the last nine years. And it hasn't changed. Never mind inflation or anything else. My gosh, right? We're making pennies on the dollar for. Pick a number, any number. I don't care what the number is. I don't care if it's eighteen thousand. Whatever it is now and start the cola is starting next year. We just go from here. Or if we backdate a cola to back then, which is kind of what we did for the mayor's salary last time we talked about it is we. Looked at when it was set, we looked at what it would have benefited by getting a cola and we sent it to that. So that I didn't, I I personally prefer to take the politics out of it. Because all of us could run on, gosh darn, I'm going to cut the council salary or benefits or whatever else and. Because it's not fair or whatever, a citizen shouldn't have to pay for it or whatever. And it's very popular and it's easy to say. And you're also limiting who's going to serve. You're also limiting who's going to run. Because it does take time. And you also. Alexander, I said this before, Alexander Hamilton or George Washington said it in the Federalist Papers. Or something that elected officials or or public officials should be compensated so they're not subject to being. Persuaded by other people. He who pays the council controls the council. The public should pay the council, not the developer or somebody.
So um. My thoughts on the cola. This, it makes an awful lot of sense. I I love the idea originally. And then when I heard the public clamor during the meeting. They were saying, hey, it's it's not transparent. I don't like that. I don't like the automatic pay raise. You should have to have a public hearing every time.
And we would have to have a public hearing.
Every year.
Every year, so that is still state law.
So anyway, the the. The president spoke was. It kind of changed my mind, even though I really do love the concept of a cola. The resident was just like, hey, automatic pay raises. I don't like that. And their their. Main argument was that it's not as transparent. But. I'm listening and I. Because I think it's a smart approach and I I like what you said about. Eliminating the the politics from the decision making. Do like.
Well, that's the whole reason even starting is just like the um, the chair position. I wanted to try to take our own politics and our own having to do things out of that. That's why both of these were there. Um, I'm okay. If the cola becomes a thing and it's something that we, you know, it's it's not that it's not transparent. It's very. Transparent because we have to discuss it every year. It's there's no.
Goes into it's state law now as of last year.
There there is no hiding anything about it.
They have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, there there would be that every time and. People could come and say, no, you don't deserve it. And then we'd have to vote against that. Can I? You have to have a public hearing, even if you don't increase. You will have a public hearing on council compensation every year. Yeah.
Yep. But uh, so that's what I'm saying. There there's no that this is not fair. That that that's an argument that 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 more than wait. But if we can just come up with something that it's not, it doesn't become an an issue. It doesn't become a. I did this, they did that kind of thing, or they wanted this, I wanted that. When it comes to something that we are all. A a part of. So that's the whole thing I'm looking for.
Let me remind the the one that I substitute motion. So there's one person. That came and said, you don't, none of you deserve a raise. Okay, fine. That's great. I don't want people to say that.
I remember about sixty three.
There's another person that didn't care about the raise. He cared about it being connected to the mayor's salary. But okay, let's take that off. We're not making it to mayor's salary. Might be twenty percent, ten percent, fifty percent. Um, and then there was another one that I. Yeah, there's another one that I had heard was worried about the cola. So those three things. So that's why I came back and said, well, why don't we set a policy? Because what happens is there's always going to be someone that says, well, Councilmember Lamb's the one who said, give yourself a raise, right? You don't want to be that person. So if you have it every four years, just like we do with the mayor. It's never a Councilmember Bloom's the one who brought it up or Councilmember Green's one who brought it up. It's always the council discusses it every four years. And yes, it's always going to be political, even with the cola. My only issue with doing every four years is it's.
My only issue with doing every four years is it's, right now, the one that I proposed, it would be during the at-large years. So if you're an at-large candidate, what's gonna be your vote usually? No, because then when you go.
The year you're running.
Yeah, the year you're running, you're you'll have voted against it. And this isn't against anyone that's on at-large, it's just the nature of the game. I was at large, I would probably say no too.
Doesn't matter where you have it, I'll vote against it, so it's okay.
That's fair, but I mean, you.
I like the idea of.
But you still take the salary, so.
I I liked your idea of having it at a set time. So that it it is something, but I just need to say this because I've heard this over and over. You ran for a political office, of course, it's political. Of course, people use things in campaign. You're a campaign manager and you're using things in campaigns. Someone ran on, we're gonna lower your water rates, your water rates. They won. Their water rates didn't go down. It's called politics. That's what we signed up for. I do like that, so it doesn't have to be an individual person saying, hey, let's look at this. I think that's a really wise decision. Right? So that then then it's just brought up and it isn't. I really think we need to look at this, so I'm gonna turn in the RCA and now my name's on it.
And my name is on it.
I know, and so I think.
Uh yeah.
But I do not want the cola. I I'm shocked at what um. The county council is getting because theirs is tied to the cola. We are not employees. I don't think it's fair to tie us with the employees. I just to be that. Just isn't fair.
But you took health care and that's.
I do. I do because I had a resident on me. I should, I've had several.
And that's fair, but I'm saying that's something employees get.
Oh, right. But I mean.
I don't want to tie it to that, but I do like your idea and I would vote for that.
I I prefer to take the. Discussion every July. And again, we haven't had, we don't have this discussion every four years. In fact, this is the. First time it's gotten this far since I've.
I think you had one two years ago.
It's the first time it's gotten this far. It it comes up every now and then and it dies.
And and maybe we take it off next year because it isn't at large year.
Would it would it make more, would it make more sense to?
Political year.
Put it in a non, non-election year.
Which would be this year.
Would be this year or two years from now.
If if that's a concern.
I I mean, those of us here history aren't concerned, right?
If if we want, if we want to take more of, we're never gonna eliminate the politics from this. If we want to take. More of politics out. Then the process should be and it maybe should be the same with the mayors. Um as well. Is. If you recall, a couple of years ago. We actually had in the code where a citizen group would create and help develop. What the council and what the mayor was supposed to make. That was tied to the cumbersome. Very cumbersome. And we eliminated that very cumbersome process of maintaining the ethics commission. Is that ethics commission was just so cumbersome, we never actually even instituted it. And we dropped all of that when we adopted and adopted the policy that we would use the state-elected. Um ethics commission, um state-elected officials ethics commission from the state. So. The question would be. Should we do it? Every four years? But should the intervening process of that be that this body? And and we we do it, we do it for the council, we also do it for the mayor. That we select, we have it codified, but we select a citizen group. That would then meet for a period of. Whatever. We we don't have to define that in ordinance. We can do that when we pass the ordinance, appointing them. That they would have a deadline to come back with resident input. And those kind of things with, and we we would put in the parameters. You know, you don't want it to be less than what you're making and you know, whatever. But you put it in, you put it in parameter, you put in the parameters uh and appoint a citizen group. We have the authority to appoint citizen group. Would that be part of the process? That then we could say, hey, group, give us. A recommendation or give us three numbers or give us something.
We should all just write down numbers, put them in a hat and draw one out.
Well, that's what you did for the mayor.
That's what we do with the mayors.
I don't know. That number came from what I was watching. I'm like, oh, cool.
So so you know, and 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 at that point, you know, we could. With the permission of the administration, have so from HR. Appointed to that resident. Commission as well to look at, because they would be the HR professional that could help provide or at least some sort. Hey, can we use the term ex officio there, Patrick? Because of their position, they're.
I'm sure we could find a Latin term.
I I'm just throwing that, you know, because ex officio is based on their position, right? Uh so that they would be ex officio as part of that commit- uh that committee. To help provide um the data that they have on HR stuff. Just a couple of thoughts, but.
I would.
I I I'm not sure that I want to go down much of a road without without some other discussions on the table and so. I don't know where where I'd say.
I think we've had discussions. So which road are you not wanting to go down? We've had three discussions now. I've already want more. I I thought I'm asking, because.
The thing, here's what I'm seeing, by the way, is I'm seeing a lot of disparate opinions, a lot of uh different philosophies. Not a lot of agreement. I predict this is gonna die the same death it's died every time it's been discussed now. We're gonna be sitting.
I like Helen's idea of the citizens group that looks at both ours and the mayor's salary. And I like Chad's idea of uh having it just something that routinely is is looked at by the bond. How can you both of those are are wise? So so I think we have some that are. Decent, because I agree with both of them.
What's your criteria on the citizens group?
That's a hard one.
Why don't we start with something? So we've got, actually got movement. So we start with the amendment.
Policy.
Right? So we have that in place and then we explore adding the citizens group, but we at least get something started.
You think you start with the next mayor?
Yes.
Except I don't want to, I'm not want, I don't want to go down the road of compensation unless we talk about entire compensation. And benefits are on the table.
We have been talking about that.
I'm not that several. Yeah, we have, and I won't go down that road, so I'm probably gonna be a no to anything. So that's just where I'm at.
Then which sounds like we're not having conversations. I made. You just said you're not gonna say, you're saying.
I made some suggestions and just got shot to hell.
I didn't accept the help.
We wanted to get us started.
Let's talk about previous.
So my proposal would be, let's have the the council compensation discussion this December, twenty twenty-four. And set the policy to do it every four years. And then once we have that set, and I know you want the citizens committee, I know you've talked about it as well, but once we have that set in December, then let's talk about. The second part of it, get in a committee together as we go into the mayor's salary in.
Well, could our chair ask if maybe there are four that are willing to do a.
So I think Pamela and I are putting that on the proposal.
Right.
So.
Right, but I think we could ask. Right now, and if there's four of us that want us in the committee, we could be back as well.
Feel free, I mean, have have. Have a discussion.
I'm not interested in a city uh citizens committee until I know what the criteria is set to be on the committee.
Well, we would have to make that up.
Well, that that's what I'm saying. Then come to me with that. I'm not willing to go down that road until. I know where that road's leading, because I have seen so many committees. Get thrown into things and it's not, turns out, oh, these were not the people we needed, but now we have to listen because, and I'm not saying in this. I've been in business for a long time and when employee committees get put together, same sort of thing. If you don't set up the criteria, what we're looking for, to make sure that we've got a balanced.
Property owners and West.
Oh, that's everybody, pretty much, unless you're renting. And then what are renters allowed? They still have to, they still have to do things in the city. So you're now taking out people who rent in the city when 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 they're a citizen of the city as well. So that to me. It's not good.
Open to whatever that looks like, but I think it's a really good idea. And all the questions. That's all we're deciding right now. If there's four that like that, then we'll add.
Later on down the road.
Yeah, that citizens committee worked with the former government.
It didn't. It was a waste of my time. It was a complete waste of my time. We spent, what, eight weeks, maybe six? And we presented it and the council just said, I don't care.
So one of the reasons I'm on this council is because many years ago, I came and talked about wanting to help with the art stuff with the city. And I was told, we don't need your help. And so I was a citizen trying to be a citizen committee and offer my help, and I was told, we don't need your help. And really the ci- the city needed my help when it came to the art stuff. And so. That happened. So like I said, I want to know what the criteria is to go on the meeting and not just take, you know.
Why would I want to stick my nose into that conversation?
Yeah, well, but there are people who do.
Some do.
Some do. At least we we can get a start.
Having one, once I know what that's gonna be with. Because it could all be, if it was all just landowners, then. I'm gonna say that's that's not, I would vote no on that. So that's what I'm saying. If we come up with criteria, I'm good. So we're not gonna come up with that tonight. So my vote is no on that now, but if we start coming up with something, yes. My vote on just saying, we're going to discuss or we've come up with a thing in December, like these two are talking about, I'm good with that. Just that's something that we're gonna do.
I'd like to speak to the citizens. I'm worried that perhaps it could have the appearance of the council turning it past the books. I could be wrong. And I I I'm not saying that that for sure my opinion, I just I'm worried about that book. The the optic of that. Tell me I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, and man, I agree with exactly.
Parameters come in as well. When you set the guidelines for who's on the committee, what it's about, that makes a big difference.
Well, yeah, so they're, we are gonna have, you know, there, the reason it's political and we are gonna have people who are always gonna vote. No on a raise, but if the citizens said we could have a raise, then they'll be okay with it.
What if you get six people that don't ever want to give them a raise?
Well, see, that's the other thing is like, okay, they all said you could have a raise, but you chose them, so. You know.
That's true, because we you choose them. We choose.
I choose my friends to, and they're all like, yeah, I want, I want Councilmember Sheldon to have more money. He's my buddy. Let's give him some more money.
I think council members whose last name start with Jason.
So going back to it, I think we start from there and then if we want to explore the committee, we start bringing forward that.
I've been a bones for years in service.
That's the same as Jay.
This is what I'm talking about, though. There's such differences of.
There's seven different opinions.
If we started where we were and just said, you know what, let's just set it and forget it.
That was, that was what I.
I think the problem with that, though, is what we heard from the citizens, that they didn't want that.
From like two citizens.
But we also got, you know, a couple of emails that talked about. No, no, but we also had emails and and calls that were.
But that's why we didn't vote on it that night. Those people did complain about it.
Right. And every year we, or not every year, but for the past several years, we've done this uh inflationary tax increase. Now, that doesn't unanimously pass, right? We've done it for several years. Staff works on that and basically. Every year comes to us with a.
No, because we didn't do it the year of the mayor always.
You still passed the tax increase.
But it wasn't recommended.
It wasn't right. It wasn't first and then it was taken back.
So it wasn't.
Because it was a campaign.
Exactly, because it's political. As we serve in.
Running the same year and guess who proposed it and guess who passed it and guess who still got reelected?
Yep.
Just saying. Crazy. I know, right? I understand if if we if we go with where we are. Start where we are and just. And go from here with a policy that just sets itself. That we don't have to do this every time. I don't know if you want to call this politics and say, this is what we elected to do is sit around this table and argue and point fingers and yell at each other.
We have to do this in a meeting.
I like that idea and I think we've got more than four to do that, so I think we can be done eventually.
Do we want to set it?
She's got her.
Because I I would look at it like, the policy, yeah, we want to set the policy. But also this would be there, you want to set it because you don't want to do it during an at-large.
We don't want to do it at large. If we don't do it this year, then we're just pushing this.
Four years.
Yes, exactly. I give you two years probably.
Could you have?
So can I ask, just clarifying, there's four or more that want to do the substitute policy. Is that?
Of the putting it in policy that we that we look at.
And then.
Compensation every four years.
We're scheduling this conversation every four years.
Yes.
Just just to be clear.
Would it be a committee of the whole conversation, though? Do we do the mayor's committee of the whole? I know, I'm just asking, did you do the mayor's committee of the whole? I don't know if you did.
Yes, we did.
So it'd be every four years, starting December twenty twenty-four. So December twenty twenty-four, December twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, and so so move forward with the substitute for council action at a council meeting. This next month, November, and then another work session in December.
No, no work session.
But all of it, you're setting.
The policy to come in November and then for us to have the council discussion.
In December. That's what I understood, is that right?
Want to have the vote in December, right?
I want to have the vote of whether or not to increase council's compensation in December.
Yeah.
And if we're no, that's great. If we're all yes, that's great. It's just. We're not deciding tonight. Okay.
So it's gonna come to a committee of the whole in December or to a council meeting?
We don't have a committee of the whole in December.
This is, yeah, we have.
Would have to be. So if you're writing an ordinance.
I love that we're scheduling dysfunction for every four years. We should have a big argument.
Eggshell walking, you know, at a minimum up.
Well, it's been ten years since we had this discussion, so.
You know, we've had this discussion before. Last time the salary was increased was January of twenty sixteen. That's what I'm saying.
A couple of years time since I've been here.
But it's never gotten this far.
I saw I saw meeting notes from twenty twenty-one, I believe.
Well, the the problem is, is that you can't set the policy and say, we're gonna meet in a committee of the whole in December. We don't have. Committee, the whole meeting in December.
Maybe the whole discussion probably before December, if we're gonna set the policy, we have to vote on it.
Okay, we do like what we're doing tonight and have a committee of the whole after. You have capacity, a couple of things got moved off of November's work session, so you do have capacity for that discussion in an existing committee of the whole.
Hey.
My my final remark is, doesn't have to be.
May as it hasn't been another either. Trying to make a policy, make it easier and 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 it will be.
We had a really nice agreement in place in this room. Went to the public hearing and everybody changed the lights.
No. I think we get public input.
That's some good public input that was was really well thought out and we wanted to appreciate that and.
Not discounting that, but I just.
I'm just saying.
I don't know. Idea to just die, just, I don't, I wasn't trying to say it needs to die, I just wanted to.
No, I think.
Did we get to four people who were in favor of the resident commission? I don't know.
No, we didn't.
No.
How many were there?
Oh, there weren't four.
Two.
I'm not opposed to it, I just want to see.
There weren't four.
Yeah, but there weren't four tonight, it's what council. Right?
I'm not against it, I'm just not for it.
You get off the fence. Get off the fence.
I'm not out for the bait, the bait. I would be very up to it, thi- this is what they would do, this is what they would do.
At, at the end of the day. And I know where you wanna do. You wanna have a policy that we're, you council salary every four years.
It's not tied to a single person, or.
That's not tied to a single person, but whether we do it in December, or whether we do it in June, it's still an election year. Um, and.
It's always an election.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, because elections, it'll get brought up in it.
Um, so it's not gonna. I, I, I don't wanna.
If you do it in June next year, that's worth it in December this year. I think, oh, yeah.
I think it needs to be done before campaigning starts.
Right. Not in June.
Well, but does it, but my point is, does it need to be done in December, could it be done in January, could it be done in February?
Could be done next week.
I think last month would have been better.
I can tell you, I think probably four people in the city will vote for you or against you, based on what you do. Probably about.
If, if you don't have anything better than that to run off of, then you shouldn't be on the council. If that's your, your one thing, so. No one's gonna run on just one thing.
Hey, should we call this horse dead and beaten?
Yeah.
Beat into glue?
Yeah.
And the school kids and.
Second.
All in favor?
All I know is I heard you put your sense on the table, now we're senseless.
And that was the end of the sense, and that conversation.
That conversation.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's why.
You know what, I may look at it.
Never. It's never, it's never a positive thing, there's never a happy outcome.